Good evening. I'm calling this meeting to order. The time is 5:33 PM. In accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, Texas Government Code, Chapter 551, this meeting is officially open with a quorum present. We will now move to our pledge, vision, and mission statements, which will be led by our JROTC cadets from Benbrook Middle High School.
Please stand for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which they stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And now for the Texas pledge. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible. Please be seated for a moment of silence.
The Fort Worth ISD vision: Igniting in every child a passion for learning.
The Fort Worth ISD mission: Preparing all students for success in college, career, and community leadership.
I'd like to now turn it over to Ms. Jessica Becerra for our recognitions. Ms. Becerra?
Good evening, President Martinez, First Vice President Jackson, interim superintendent Dr. Molinar, and trustees. Tonight we have three groups to recognize. At this time, I invite trustees to come down and greet our guests. Tonight we have, we recognize our greeters from Benbrook Middle High School, JROTC. These exceptional students embody the spirit of leadership, commitment, and community service that is the heart of the JROTC program. Please join me in thanking Cadet Major Derain Favre, Cadet Major Sawyer Satterwhite, Cadet Command Sergeant Major Tatum Barbie, Cadet First Lieutenant Jeremy Wyndham. And the program is led by retired Lieutenant Colonel Michael Scahill and retired Master Sergeant Tony Watson. And we'll take a quick picture. Thank you all for being here tonight. Our next group are the national winners in the Texas Association of Future Educators. Over the summer, Fort Worth ISD sent 23 students to the Taffey National Conference and Competition. At the national competition, seven students finished in second place and four finished in first place. At this time, Dr. Robert Wright will read the students' names.
From Arlington Heights High School, our national champion, Yesseni Moreno, children's literature in Spanish. Robin Nixon, Camila Peralta, Anastela Rodriguez, for interactive bulletin board. Gwen Bauer, creative lecture. Sofia Garcia and Denise Madrano, children's literature pre-K Spanish. Kira Binus, creative lecture five. Now from South Hills, Kaylee Luna and Inahi Desodato, interactive bulletin board, elementary. Mariana Aguiniga, educator, rising leadership. And Sarah Campos, children's literature pre-K Spanish. I'm sorry, I thought we were just gonna. Go back to Heights on the thing, sorry. From South Hills also, Maria Garcia, creative lecturer. Lizeth Kano and Lydia Netro from Inside Our School. Andrea Espinoza, Carolina Martinez, children's literature pre-K. From Paul Lawrence Dunbar High School, Ian Yearbook, Vanessa Alcala. And Melissa Madrigal Corona, lesson planning and STEM. From Polytechnic High School. Sorry, guys. Samantha Para, Dahlia Lopez, Jorge Molina, and Ismael Munoz, public service announcement. Angel Montanez, Aurelio Aguayo, from Ethical Dilemma. Now for RL Pasco High School. Elizabeth Claire, job interview. Vianney Gonzalez, Cecily Jimenez, Ashley Saldis, and Darisha Vance for public service announcement. From Southwest High School, Sadiya Harris, Tiana Henderson, Tammy Nguyen, and Abigail Quintanilla for public service announcement. And Western Hills High School, our national champions, Daisy Daniels, Samantha Chavez, and Sofia Castellanos from public service announcement. Also Elena Montalvo from lesson plan and delivery. Nicole Crisp and Tanisia Pierce, children's literature pre-K. And Jeanette Mesa, children's literature pre-K Spanish. Brianna Oliver, educators' rising moment. Bethany Moncrief, Angelina Ramirez, and Deja Williams for lesson plan and delivery. Congratulations to all of our kids and teachers for their hard work.
Thank you and congratulations to these exceptional students. Our next group is the Financial Services Department and Division of Business and Finance. This time, CFO Carmen Arrieta-Candelaria will tell you more and introduce her team.
Thank you, and good evening. The district received a perfect score for its 2024 rating through the Financial Integrity Rating System of Texas, otherwise known as the FIRST rating. Every year, the state rates Texas public schools through this system, which is designed to encourage them to better manage their financial resources, to provide the maximum allocation possible for direct instructional purposes. Earning a perfect score is an important designation for Fort Worth ISD and affirms what we practice each and every day, and that is to make sure that our dollars are being managed well and that we have the systems in place to be able to make good financial decisions. We've outstanding, professional, dedicated individuals in our financial team that strive to achieve this FIRST rating each and every year, and I am privileged to have the honor of working alongside them. And I'm also pleased to introduce some of the members of the Financial Services Department that are here with me today. First and foremost, Annette Zachary, please step forward and greet the board. Belinda Waters. Kristy Thompson Henderson. Samella Wilson. Tashana Hayes. Tamina Lehman. Tanya Wright. Joseph Corley. And Kathy Miller. And our comptroller and head of financial services, Maria Chavez. I will now join the team for a photo.
Congratulations to the team on this astounding achievement. Trustees, you may now return to the dais.
Congratulations to all, and thank you so much for being here tonight. I'd like for us all to take notice to a screen right there. Our President Roxanne Martinez is here with us. She couldn't be in her seat tonight, but she is certainly here and will be here for the whole meeting. Welcome, President Martinez.
Thank you, First Vice President Jackson.
Do you want to do a test run to see if we can hear you?
Could you hear me? Thank you. Were you able to hear me?
We can. I don't know if this is hearing as entertaining as when Trustee Bridges was on, but you can try harder. Okay, we'll move on to presentations. Accelerating Learning at the Core: Strengthening Tier One Instruction. Dr. Molinar, would you please introduce?
Thank you, Trustee Jackson. If everyone would like to turn their attention to the screen, we have a QR code, just in case it's easier for you to pull it up on your phone and follow along, and then anyone at home that may want to follow along the presentation. So this evening, we have our Deputy Superintendent of Leading and Learning, Mr. Chaudry, who's going to be presenting our report and presentation on Tier One instruction this evening.
On, there you go. Good evening, trustees. Dr. Molinar, thank you for having me today. Excited to present our work that we are doing to strengthen our work around Tier One. We have a lot of work to do, but we've made quite a few gains, but wanted to share what some of our key focus areas are going into this year and beyond. So if you follow along, jumping right into Slide 1, just what is Tier One, right? Ultimately, Tier One is that first teach, right? When you are teaching a concept, right, to a group of students, right? You are delivering it in a manner that you hope, right, that that all of your students could get it, right? But that's never fully possible, right? But in research, right, has shown that you can ultimately, right, if you get Tier One right, you can get 80% of your students to be able to master a concept, right? Everything that comes after Tier One is what defines your groups, right? Your Tier Two groups, your small group instruction, which can happen in the same class period. And then you, of course, have your Tier Three, which is your one-on-one, right? And then after you've gone through that cycle, hopefully effectively, doing your due diligence, then you can think about other things, right? Referral and other services that are needed for students. But getting Tier One right is crucial, right? Tier One is that first teach, and how we deliver that, the resources we have, the students that you consider who are in your room, whether half of your students are emerging bilingual or half of them have IEPs, right? How you deliver that grade level standard, that concept, right, in that first teach and what comes after it is absolutely essential. And so moving beyond that, one of the things we did early on, starting with convocation, right, we did a thought exchange where we exchanged our community around what good Tier One looks like and should look like in Fort Worth ISD. And then there's just what the empirical research says around what good Tier One is. And so these are just broad categories of things that all Tier Ones should have. Right off the bat, right, you are teaching with curriculum that is research-based. The acronym that you hear nowadays a lot in Texas is HQIM, right? High Quality Instructional Materials that are aligned to the TEACs, right? So that is crucial, right? You've got to have a strong viable curriculum, and Fort Worth ISD has made strides to be able to adopt that across all of our grades and content areas. Beyond that, right, Tier One lessons, right, are systematic, right? Teaching is an art and science. The science, right, there's an art to your lesson, right? How you deliver that lesson, how you break students into groups, how you regroup, how you check for understanding, all of that is planned, right? All of that is planned. The Texas Commissioner often likes to describe teachers as conducting brain surgery while they're teaching, right? That's a metaphor he often uses, Mike Rath, and it is. It is truly, right, there's a whole scientific process around it and how you deliver Tier One. And then, of course, there is an art to it, right? You've got to make your lessons relevant. You've got to make them engaging, right? I was just at CC Moss not too long ago, the students stood up and they were exchanging their thoughts, and they were moving around to Selena, right? And and it's just that connection and what they were doing, right, was amazing to see, and how they were both correcting each other on the wrong and right answers and ultimately arriving at the right answer, right? That's an engaging lesson. The curriculum we adopted doesn't say to do that, but the teacher, who is one of our designated teachers under the teacher incentive allotment, knows how to take that lesson to the next level and knows her students. So that's what I, that's what we. So that's, that's what I, that's what we mean when we talk about rigorous, relevant, and engaging lessons, making them connect, right, to the students' lives and what that looks like. Moving on, right, you've got to know your data. You've got to know who's in the room, you've got to know what they bring, what kind of prior learning they have, what kind of gaps they have, right? And you've got to be able to supplement and scaffold your lessons in the manner that ensures that all students get access to that, right? Sometimes it's the concept that you're trying to get across, right? Versus, right, being able to read an entire passage, being able to understand the concept. That's very, very, very important, right, when we think about math. On the data-driven instruction, one of the things that we'll talk about a little bit more today is about just-in-time supports and learning acceleration. And I'll talk about more about what that means, right? How do you get students who are behind on certain key things they didn't get in the previous grades, but at the same time ensure that they get grade-level content in their current grade and be able to move forward? Next, right, you've got to have safe classrooms, you've got to have supportive classrooms, right? Your emotional IQ, right, the connections that you have with your students, you've got to know them. You've got to know you can be able to walk behind Mohammed and tap him on the shoulder because he's talking and without even making a fuss, he stops talking and he focuses back on what he's doing, right? Our amazing teachers do that every day. They know their students, they know how to have that conversation with them. And then it's okay to fail forward, it's okay to have wrong answers, right? Because that's an opportunity to learn, right, in order to get to the right answer. And being able to have that trust and that culture in your classroom, right? That's, that's not easily done, right? Oftentimes, teachers are spending a good chunk of the first weeks just to do that, right? A lot of our schools are also looping, I've noticed, where they're going, they're moving forward with a cohort of classrooms, right? Where they already know their kids well, right? And so they don't have to spend as much as time getting to know them. And not every, it's not for everyone, right? But some people do like that, that's a, for example, a strategy that people are using. And of course, you're designing lessons with all students in mind, right? Equity is about thinking about all students and then ensuring that you are delivering it without watering it down, right? Grade level standards matter, grade level teaching matters. The scaffolds is another thing, right? Someone who is still struggling to read on grade level, but you are still teaching social studies, right, a concept in a historical period, right? How you make that accessible to them, being able to teach the concept that is relevant at seventh grade while also understanding how you deliver scaffolds and supports to that student to be able to understand the concept. So those are just core features, those are things that rose to the top, right? When it came to when we engaged our community. But those are also things that research says that is matter, matters. For us, right, a big thing that kept popping up is like student talk, making sure our students are able to learn from another, right? Like the hidden curriculum on the peer effect, right? That is very important and purposeful grouping. So those are just core elements of Tier One, right? As we think about what we look for every day in our classrooms and how we get better in key areas. Let's talk a little bit about the data-driven instruction component, right? Specifically, learning acceleration and just-in-time supports, right? Getting students to catch up when they are behind, right? It is hard work, but it is not impossible. Historically, right, you can see right here, this is before the pandemic. A student who is not reading on grade level by third grade in the state of Texas, and then you go to fifth grade, right, and see whether or not they are now reading at grade level, it is, it only ends up being true for 5% of students, right? It is not easy, it gets harder and harder after third grade, we know that, right? Your high school teachers will tell you that, your middle school teachers will tell you that. It is not impossible, but it does. But acceleration is key and just-in-time supports. I can run this cohort data for our district, you'll see the same piece as well in terms of how many students catch up within that two-year band, right? And we want to get them at grade-level reading before they even hit middle school, right? Just wanted to show you what that looks like just at the state level and the challenge that is and the work. Not impossible, but it is a challenge that we must meet every day, especially when you think about our needs and the demographic population we serve at scale. One of the key things around that is ensuring our students have just-in-time supports, right? And what that essentially means is, moving on to the next slide, is that how do you ensure that students both get what they missed in the previous grade while at the same time giving them the current grade-level content? Not everything they miss is relevant every day, but some key things are, right? Historically, when you think about remediation, you are just teaching content that they missed. And what ends up happening is you end up falling behind, right? You end up, right, at a certain point, you end up lowering the bar because you are just teaching them not grade-level content, you are teaching them something they have missed, right? And then what happens with your pacing, right, you keep falling behind, right? You never catch up, right? In terms of how you go about moving forward and giving them what they need, when you look at, right, rock star teachers, teachers who really masterfully are able to both get students what they need and teach grade-level content, right? They do something called acceleration and just-in-time supports now. We have enough research now, decades of research, to be able to codify what that means, right? When you look at what you have to teach next, there are prerequisite skills that you know you have to be able to map to know that students need in order to be able to access that grade-level content. But you've got to do the work to be able to actually map out what those prerequisite skills are. And then what acceleration and just-in-time support says is, you embed that into the grade-level content, right? You embed that, you embed that into your Tier One, you embed that into your Tier Two, you embed that into your grouping, you embed the scaffolds into it, right? The students are getting grade-level content, but they're also getting practice, right? And remediation, to use that word, while they're getting grade-level content. Again, not everything you miss is relevant at the current moment, but some things you miss you need practice on. So that is essentially what acceleration and just-in-time supports is. I won't read everything here, but the key piece is identifying the gaps for what you're about to teach, right, the prerequisite skills, and being able to embed that thoughtfully into Tier One. In a place, right, like Fort Worth ISD, in a place with districts with the needs that we have, and post-pandemic, when you really think about all the gaps that widened during that time, acceleration and just-in-time supports is even that much more important. It is not easy. Again, I take you back to that slide about like cohorts of Texas students who were not on grade level in third grade, and then two years later, how many actually moved, right? But this is something we want to get really great at. No one can say they're a model. Dallas can't say a model, the school, the districts that we get compared to, but districts that are, right, moving the needle, right? They're getting this right, both in Tier One, Tier Two, and beyond. So just something to think about. The next big focus for us is curriculum-based professional learning. It sounds like a no-brainer, right? Professional learning communities and professional learning you get should be focused on curriculum. Research shows actually when you do survey teachers and you ask them how much curriculum-based learning did they get in pre-service education or how much they get during the year, it's actually not a lot, right? There's PD on so many things, but actually having PD on the adopted curriculum. So for us, for example, in reading in our elementary, we use Amplify, right? Making sure teachers have the time to both internalize, take in, level up, refine the adopted curriculum is crucial, right? So one of the things just I've been looking at is how much curriculum-based professional learning do we do? Do we give our teachers time to take in the lessons that they're about to teach? Do we give them time to be able to refine them, right? Because just the package alone is not enough. Again, we have to think about acceleration and just-in-time supports. But curriculum-based PD is very, very important. So this is something that is going to be a focus of ours. We've already done a lot of great work on it, we just need to go deeper. Oftentimes, people think about curriculum implementation across three buckets. There's the initial implementation, right? You just got the curriculum, you opened up the box and you have the materials and you're in your early years of implementing it. Then you have consistent implementation, right? You are seeing, whenever you walk into that room, whenever you come at any point in the year, you are seeing the materials, the HQIM, the High Quality Instructional Materials, fully integrated into the classroom, right? And the teachers have fully internalized it. And then you have a whole other level, which is sustainability and innovation. I was at Merit not too long ago and there's a pair of fifth-grade teachers who consistently get 70% to 80% of their teachers to move up a level. They're actually sisters, which is pretty cool. And they are, it's an amazing class, right? You walk in and you think like just project-based learning is happening and you're like, are they even using the curriculum? They're using the curriculum as the floor, right? It's the floor for them, they're teaching at this master's level. And then they are students who are behind when they come in. And but the whole school has adopted this culture. Like the principal, when she came, one of the things she said is, "I buy sub-time, so my teachers can have extra days every six weeks to just have more time to prep, to take in the curriculum." During her first year there, she focused on just internalizing the curriculum. And so just watching that fifth-grade pair in reading, I was a reading teacher, is amazing to see. When people say, "Oh, you're not allowed to go off the curriculum." Actually, if you're teaching well, you are going off of the curriculum, meaning that you are innovating off of the curriculum, not just completely neglecting it. And so that's just an example of sustainable innovation. To be just blunt, right, we are within all three places, depending on where you go, right? We want to be, we're more in consistent implementation, we're getting there. There are some places and sometimes in some areas where it is still initial implementation for a wide variety of reasons, right? Even though we have adopted the curriculum a few years ago. But I will say, the vast majority, we are, we are right now within moving beyond between consistent implementation and sustainability innovation. When we really get to scale sustainable innovation, we're going to see more what I just described going on in those fifth-grade classrooms at Merit, for example. I'll give you one more example about curriculum is I was at Southwest. And you guys remember from the workshop that we did, that Southwest has amazing algebra games, right? Black students at Southwest had double-digit gains when it came to algebra. I wanted to go hang out with those algebra teachers. Like they were in a PLC and I saw them, I'm like, pulled up a chair, I'm like, what are you doing? Like what are you doing with HMH, which is our algebra curriculum? They do more than what the curriculum asks, right? It's the floor for them, right? They do more, they know their students, they know the gaps that they have when they come from middle school, and they take it to another level, right? We, the answers are inside, right? It's about scaling, it's about learning from them, it's about making sure people can learn from each other. But again, if people say you're not allowed to veer from the curriculum, you've got to follow a script, that's not true. In fact, we want you to innovate off the curriculum, it's just the floor. But we've got to have viable curriculum that's not only TEACs-aligned, but it's also research-based. So just something to keep in mind. Another key area for us that we want to get better is at coaching. We coach a lot, right? And when you, you know, I'm a research nerd, so you have, when you look at the meta-analysis on coaching, right? And there's a pair of researchers who've looked at all rigorous studies around coaching across the country, right? The effectiveness of it tends to fade out when you start scaling coaching programs. And how we do coaching matters, right? We're having a really good reflection and conversation with Dr. Molinar, like are we leveraging our coaches effectively? How are we using them, right? Do we have the coaches in the right place? Do we have them doing the right things, right? Those are things, those are conversations we're having right now. Also, the frequency of coaching. And when I say real-time coaching, this is your low stakes. These are not the things you use on T-Test, these are not the gotcha, they should not be used in that way. These are real-time feedback in the moment, being able to do that thoughtfully, right? Because if you wait too long, you've already missed that opportunity to provide someone that feedback and run with it. And so we're really focusing on deepening our work around coaching and how we do that, also looking at how we're deploying our coaches. Like we're having a serious look at that right now as well. Another vignette I want to just give you, I won't read it, it's a coaching sprint. And essentially, when you think about T-Test, which is our teacher evaluation system, right? Teacher set a goal and it's a year-long process where you set a beginning, a goal, you have your middle-of-the-year reflection, and then you close out, right? That's a focus goal. But throughout the year, right, you have key opportunities to level up folks. Oftentimes, we steer all of our coaching to our new teachers or those who are really struggling, neglecting the average. We want to move, we need to lift the average. And we've got to be able to use our model teachers effectively around that. So this is just the vignette, both from the research that I cited, right? On how you can move faster within a short time-bound sprint to be able to both lift up, identify a baseline across all your teachers, right? Identify your strong teachers, leverage them to be able to lift the average up, right? In order to be able to really lift that campus up, you've got to lift your average performance up. You can't neglect the average performance, that matters. And oftentimes, just not intentionally, we fall into the, "We're just going to put all the energy on low performance or those really struggling." And again, we've got to also make sure we have the right tools and resources in place and what that looks like. So that's just the vignette on that. Wanted to talk about assessment, which is a key part of our work around our Tier One work, right? When people refer to a comprehensive assessment system, right? They refer to the blend of assessments that you have locally to be able to know where your students are, right? We have a universal screener, it's called MAP, right? We take it at the beginning of the year, the middle of the year, and the end of the year. And Dr. Molinar will let you present on the power of that universal screener and what it shows us. But ultimately, right, you've got to know where your students are coming at. MAP is a universal screener on essential skills. That's how I often like to describe it, right? Where are they on these essential skills, right, that ultimately feed into multiple content areas? Then we have, of course, our nine-week interims. These are new, right? These are standardized nine-week interims that we've designed, right? We want to make sure they, they are predictive of what will happen in the spring. We used to also have unit assessments as part of our curriculum that were mandated. We freed those up, we said those are optional. But the nine weeks are required, right? And we are not alone in that, right? Going 45, an hour east to Dallas, they have nine-week assessments, they have versions of that, right? You've got to be able to know at key points in the year how our students are doing universally, right? And enable to know like that, that fifth-grade team I described at Merit, right? To know what they were doing. I was just at Diamond Hill Jarvis at a PLC literally this week, on Monday, with English team, English one and two team. And we just gave our nine-week assessments and our research team publishes something called the roller coaster that essentially shows how our entire district did, broken down by campus, and how they did on the nine weeks. So got to see our teachers at Diamond Hill Jarvis say, you know, "What are they doing at so-and-so? I'd like to go there, can I get time to go there, right? What are they doing over there and why aren't we doing this, right?" Again, it's a universal assessment, you take it away, now you are kind of, you can make those fair comparisons about what's working or not. And then you have the daily formative assessments. Those are checks for understanding in Tier One, right? Those are the things you do from a question you ask, right, to the class or in a small group, or, or, or exit ticket that you design, right? These are daily checks for understanding that are aligned to ultimately standards that feed into what will play out in the nine weeks. That will ultimately feed into hopefully what happens during the spring. So just something to think about there. Not going to read the slide, but this is just a view of what it looks like for kindergarten, right? In kindergarten, we don't have STAR, but we have our Texas KIA, which essentially gives you what our kindergarten readiness rate is, we give it in the fall. And then we have MAP as well as summatives in kindergarten as well. So this is what it looks like in kindergarten, right? And ensuring that they're developmentally appropriate and the information that we get is actionable. Again, another just global view of this, just giving the definition and purpose of each piece. I was at Benbrook Elementary today and I got to see the principal work with her fourth-grade math team, where you walk into this room and they have the beginning-of-the-year MAP data, broken down by student. And then you have this other wall where they had every student in fourth-grade math and how they moved according to the nine-week assessment. 70% of their class, 70% of their school, including their special ed students, there was no gap between how they did. It was amazing to like see that. They celebrated that, but then her whole point of that PLC, that professional learning team with her fourth-grade pair of teachers, was to help them see what students they're not thinking of when it comes to zero hour. They have something called Zero Hour that starts at the beginning of the day, which is when they do intervention and that time. What I saw today, I wish I could replicate consistently, it was just amazing to see. They are a B campus, as she, to quote her, "There's no reason why we shouldn't be an A." And I feel like they're going to be an A. But that was just a masterful use of data today, like how they used it and how she got her teachers to be able to, and the principal was leading, to be able to see something they're not seeing, even though they're with the students every day using the nine-week interim as well as other things. And seeing special ed data with the general ed population with no gaps, you don't see that every day. So, you know, I'm going to come back there and I'm going to want to shadow a special ed student because I want to know what they're doing, because there's some answers there we should unlock for the rest of the system. This is just a narrative, right? Just giving a narrative around, I worked with our ELA team to be able to craft this on how these things all come together daily, right? Obviously, there's different plays you can run in how you do all this, but wanted you to give you a narrative on how both the MAP assessment from the first weeks of school and then going into the interim with, right, all of our formative and daily checks for understanding play out that ultimately lead to spring testing and STAR. It's, I'm not going to read the vignette, right? But the vignette is to give, right, a visual on how this would play out and how a teacher would put that together effectively, right? Easier said than done, but we have many, many educators who are doing this every day in amazing ways. And oftentimes, they're doing things- And, and oftentimes, they're doing things that we're not even thinking about, right? And my job and my team's job centrally is to keep unlocking that and curate that and make sure people know how to, like, have more and more tools to be able to drive and accelerate student achievement. And with that, I will stop. Thank you very much.
Do we have any questions from trustees? Trustee Kevin Lynch.
All right, um, appreciate you taking the time, thoughtfully kind of helping us understand some of these things. I guess the question I have right now is looking at really the nine-week assessments that are something new. Can you speak to that and kind of the feedback that you're seeing across the district so far this year?
Yeah, so I got to run them through the year to see how strong they are. They're new, right? But the notion of interim and benchmarks is not new. Fort Worth has had benchmarks and interim, Dr. Molinar can tell you, that's new. So, but we had unit assessments and nine-week assessments, right? That were mandated, right? So there were multiple standardized assessments. But the nine-week concept is, is new in the regard we needed new benchmarks that align with the, the rigor of the, uh, the rigor of the new STAR, right? And so, got to run the year to be able to assess validity, right? But the notion of not having them, right? That, I would never recommend that, right? Because then you go completely, right? It's a guessing game what will happen between beginning-of-the-year map, middle-of-the-year map, and STAR. And all of the comparisons that I read about, since I've moved here, with all those districts from the Valley to Dallas, et cetera, those who are twenty points or event, they have even more interim assessments than we do. And so the concept is not new. The feedback I've gotten is, is some don't like it, some like it. Some don't like it because they just see it as more testing, right? Some don't like it that they think it might not be reliable. Well, I got to see, because I had a whole lot of smart people centrally, coupled with our research team, build these, right? So at the end of the day, we got to see whether or not it ultimately lines up. But the notion of not having them, I would never recommend that, let alone any system leader in, in, in ensuring we accelerate achievement and know what's happening.
Okay, and then is there a way to present, I guess, interim assessments to the board to have kind of a general idea around that?
Yeah.
You'll see interim assessments broken down by student groups in November. That's part of my next presentation.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Trustee Bridges.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. Bear with me just for a second here. Appreciate your presentation. And sometime I, I try to master presentation, what I, the feedback that I get and what I've seen visually with my own two eyes. I don't want to seem like Debbie Donner, and I hope it doesn't come across that way. But I'm going to give you a scenario with the Tier One. And I think we talked about, wait a minute, just in time. Making sure that we connect with, with kids and find out where they're at. Here's a scenario. You've got a class of about thirty-seven kids in it. And in that class, the third graders. And many of those third graders are not one grade behind, not two grades behind. Some are even three grades behind. Some are even struggling with recognizing letters. Now, added to the mix, you've got about ten different languages that are going in. And you have inside that group, four of our kids who don't speak any English at all. How we, give me from your experience of what you see, how that works.
Yeah, what? I want to make sure they finish so I can talk. So, a school like Clifford Davis needs, I know what you're talking about because I know where all the students with the name Mohammed are, it makes me excited. And so, and I, the way I would describe it is, a school like Clifford Davis, Tier One alone is not going to drive instruction, right? You need to make sure you have masterful Tier Two and Tier Three, right? Small group as well as one-on-one interventions and such. It's a big challenge, right? Because you have to also have translation, right? When you're thinking about the students and where they are. We have refugee students, right? Coming from Afghanistan and different places, right? So Tier One is one level of support, but you've got to get to really high-quality Tier Two and Tier Three, right? And frankly, extended day learning as well, too. That will, that's what it will take, right? Because of the gaps and needs and everything that is needed. So you've got to make sure that the school has the resources to be able to pull that off. Are we there yet? No, we're not, I can, I can tell you that.
And I'll go back to my original question, from your experience.
Yeah.
Have you seen other examples of schools similar to that?
Yes, so in Dallas, the Conrad feeder pattern is very similar to what is the clear, the Clifford Davis experience. That's where you have students coming from multiple different countries and experiences and a lot of settlement, like, for example, Catholic charities and where they settle families and such, right? But those schools are also uniquely resourced and uniquely supported and making sure they have those things. We are having that conversation right now to make sure that the traditional formula allocations and what the school gets just based on seven hundred kids is not enough. It should be driven by need as well.
And, and how do we determine with a school with such high needs, making sure they are getting, not the basic resources, but much more needed services?
We should know that out of the gate and when we design our staffing plans, our resource allocation plans, those kinds of things. I cannot speak to what was set.
Okay.
I can only speak to what's coming, right? I cannot speak to what was set, I wasn't here. So, but Dr., Dr. Molinar knows as well, right? We know that we have to do above and beyond the traditional formula and allocations for a school that you just described.
Okay, and I'm going to hold you to that.
Please do.
Okay, now, now let me move, okay. Would you define what a rock star teacher is?
A rock star teacher is someone who can accelerate growth on all students in their classrooms, right? Growth, growth, growth doesn't always mean you've taken someone who did not meet to meet immediately. You may have taken them did-not-meets to approaches, right? But you are growing your students. A high-quality school is one that grows all of its students, right? One of my favorite schools in Texas is Charles Rice Elementary in South Dallas. It is, right, because it grows its students, right? Its School Effectiveness Index, when you adjust for demographics, it grows its students. Many of its students come in low, behind, multiple grade levels. But, but by the time they leave, they have grown significantly. So a rock star school, a rock star teacher is able to, someone who can grow their students measurably.
So, just how are rock star teachers dispersed throughout the district?
Well, right now, they're spread out in multiple spaces, right? They're in different spaces, right? Some, if you do the analysis right now, it tends to track, right? Where you have a good chunk of our teacher incentive allotment teachers, because we do have a state-approved program that does recognize exemplary masters, right? They're not disproportionately at the places where we need them to be, right? There are not enough designated teachers, for example, at Clifford Davis. We need more there. Now, we don't do forced placement. Some districts do, we don't, right? People are able to apply and go where they can, right? And where they want to go, right? So that matters as well, right? So that means you have to do above and beyond on recruitment, incentives, and all those kinds of things to be able to attract designated teachers to those schools.
Okay, so should that be prioritized at the beginning of the year?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Nothing you're saying I don't disagree with.
Okay, okay. And I'm only, I'm only using that term because you, you use the term rock, rock, rock star teachers.
Yeah.
But my concern is that there's not enough rock star teachers in some of our highest needs, needed schools. And that's my, in, in my opinion. Now.
You've got to also grow the teachers you have at those schools as well.
You are absolutely right. Now, based on, and I know you can't determine the time and the date, and I'm asking this because this is the biggest question I get. When kids come at that level, that far behind, and by the time they get to fifth grade, if we're doing all we're supposed to do, at that example of the kid I just gave you, or students I just gave you who are three grade levels behind, should we expect them to be a grade level by fifth grade?
It depends, the school that they're in and where they're at and what their resources are and who the teachers they get at third, fourth, and fifth grade, right? But yes, we should be striving and obsessing about every day to build a system. When I first gave you my presentation, one of the things I told you about is consistency, consistency, right? And, and it's not consistent everywhere. So we, we should always expect, but are we built for it yet? Are we where we need to be? No, but we should always strive to build that, yes.
Okay, and my last question. Because we're data-driven now. And we can look at these X amount of students and see where they are now. And we know based on where Jaquan or, or Martinez is right now, we know he's two grade levels behind. We know he's got to have A, B, C, and D. How are we doing that to make sure we are preparing him as he moves along the grade?
Can you ask the question again? I'm trying to understand what the heart of your question is.
Okay, which?
Just can you rephrase it? Can you rephrase it?
If Johnny is three grade levels behind.
Yeah.
And, and reading the math or what have you, knowing that, I, I use, let me back to the example. I seen this through a principal some years ago. She, I went in her office and every student that was in that classroom, that she knew, that had whatever their needs were, well, so-and-so's two grade level, this kid, that she could point a finger at them. And I know we've got so much information and so much, hey, do you say this, money? That why can't we do that? To making sure as Johnny or whoever, as they move along, that we're making sure they get the serp. Am I making sense?
You are making sense, absolutely. Yeah, you're making sense, absolutely, and going back.
Because you're looking at me like I'm...
No, because the way you asked it first, I'm a learner too, so I asked for a check for understanding, right? And so thank you for saying it in a different way.
Okay.
Again, a school like Clifford Davis, right? Just staffing it on a traditional formula is not enough. You need to make sure you have additional supports, right? A single teacher cannot lift all of the students. They can lift their students, but they also need high-quality Tier Two and Tier Three supports. And the school needs to be resourced in that way. So we can do that work and we need to do that work. I'm not disagreeing with you any...
Yeah, because, and this really is my last point. We often talked about the way we move students, where we put a good teacher in front of them. But we're being realistic, if we're asking a good teacher to teach thirty-eight students. You, you feel me?
Yeah, I feel you.
Okay.
So trustee Bridges, I think during my presentation, you're going to see how we're going to start looking into how to put some supports for our teachers back into the schools. So I'm going to share that with you today. This is definitely what we need to do, and you're going to see that then.
Thanks, thank you.
Trustee Ann Dor.
Thank you, trustee Jackson. And thank you for this very comprehensive report. It is quite robust. Will this be posted on the website somewhere so that people can access it and read it?
Well, it's on Board Docs, so it's already public, but we can also put it in other places. I can work with comms to make sure that it's more prominent rather than just having to do multiple clicks to access it at Board Docs. But it's on Board Docs right now.
Okay, well, somewhere so that people can access it and, and this, there's a lot of information in here that takes some time to ingest and then digest. With the introduction of the nine-week interim assessments, where are we? Did we reduce or remove other assessments that we had been doing, giving in the past? Because I do hear quite often, and I've been one of those parents that has complained about the amount of testing. And so what, what are we not doing that we were doing when we introduced, now that we've introduced the nine-week interim assessments?
We removed the unit test. We used to have unit tests that...
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you, can you say it again?
The unit tests, that we used to have unit tests that happened more frequently, right? At four- and six-week marks, we unique, we removed that as a mandate. They're still available and some schools still use them. It works for them, but we removed that as like, you must do this all at the same time, similar to like the way the nine-week works.
Okay, so does that mean that we're doing less testing now or about the same amount of testing?
Technically, we're doing less testing because the unit test is not, our, uh, unit test does not exist with alongside the interim and the benchmark. So the unit test is away, so technically it's less testing in terms of standardized testing that we universally screen across the system.
Okay. What, I am, I am, I'm glad to hear that because I know that we need, we need the data, but we also need a balance so that teachers have time to teach. And spending a lot of time in testing, it can be frustrating for both the teacher and student. So thank you for that. You mentioned time for teachers to internalize lessons. And I know that time is not something that we have, it is a very valuable commodity. And it's also not something that we have an abundance of. And I love the idea of the principal who is taking some of their campus money and using it on substitutes in order to give teachers some time to spend with those, with that curriculum, with the lessons, with whatever it is that they're planning or working on, or maybe even some time to spend with an instructional coach to work through some of that. What are some other ways? Because I do hear often from teachers that they just do not have time. And they want to do what's right for students. Nobody goes into education to do a bad job. And teachers work hard, but people also want to know that, that they're doing a good job and that they, they're able to put all that they can into what they're doing. And so what are some other ways that we're providing some time or ways that this board can support time for teachers to master their craft?
Yeah, so beyond what individual campus-based decisions the principals are doing.
And I do recognize that there's a variety, that this is not, each principal may have a different approach to this.
So there's that. And then we have our planning days, which are unique, right? To, to Fort Worth ISD, we just had two, we just have two under our belt, right? We, we, one of the things that I, that was important to me is making sure our planning days happen at our school, right? So this was the first time where we kept everyone at their schools versus bringing them to a single place or congregating them at a single place. Then we also have our professional learning days, one is coming up in the first week in November, where it's more of a choose-your-own-adventure, right? Where it's planning days is more like, this is what we're doing collectively as a campus all throughout the calendar, right? So in addition to their weekly, right, PLCs that they have, right? They also have these days where students are not attending Fort Worth ISD that day, they're off. And then the system is planning. So those, those are the additional things that we have done as a system so far.
So I am one of nine that sit up on this dais, and I cannot mandate or determine anything, but I will say out loud that it is important to me as a trustee and as an educator that we do what we can on campuses, as a district, at the district level, but also on campuses to provide teachers with that time to provide and to master their craft. I'm going to go back to that phrase, that, that is, that is significant for me. I cannot speak for my colleagues, but it is for me. I also appreciate, I saw several times throughout this presentation that a focus on, on capitalizing on what we're doing correctly. It's very easy to identify all the things that are wrong and try to put a plan in place from, in, from the inception of that when really there are people in Fort Worth ISD that are doing some really great things on every campus. And there are also campuses that have teachers who need some additional supports. And so I, with the real-time coaching, with the PLCs, I do appreciate that we're focusing also not just on what we're not doing, but what we are doing correctly. Because that's going to be a quicker solution than trying to reinvent the wheel. So thank you for that. And that is all, thank you.
Trustee Dor, I just want to add in to about the time. Some of the things that, you know, I'm personally going out and speaking to teachers about and attending the UEA meetings, and what we're hearing is how to use that PLC time effectively and really working with our principals about how to use that time. So it does help with planning and it's not extra work. I spoke to a campus last week, there was concern that they walk away with homework. And that's not the purpose of a PLC, to have homework when you walk away. So some of this, we do have pockets that we are listening and we're getting feedback from our teachers. And we're working with our campus principals and getting feedback from them as well as what, what support they need. Also, we did, you know, take away the unit assessments, but we need to make sure we do not have campuses layering on additional assessments that, that... that, that is a campus choice. Because that's too much. We need instruction time. Like that's what we need during the day. So I know Mr. Choudry and his EDs are really watching that as well. Because we do have some, not just campus leaders, but some teachers who want additional assessments. We can't assess our students all day, every day. And then in addition to that, getting the feedback on the nine-week interim assessments. This is new to us. We've done six weeks before. In the past, we have done interims as well. But really timing them to make sure we're getting the information we need to move instruction, but we're not taking multiple days to complete a nine-week interim. That once we get back on that teaching cycle, that data really is stale or we cannot do something with that data, cause we lost too much instructional time. So we're definitely in this learning phase and, but we have to listen to what the teachers are saying. We have to be out there, we have to see it, we have to look at it. And then I've had some teachers already give us feedback on the interim assessments, some questions and some, also some great feedback. Not everything's negative of how it's working out. So I'm happy when I do interim assessments in November to bring that feedback, both positive and negative for transparency and how we can improve in that. But we really need to monitor additional assessments that's being layered on.
Thank you, I appreciate that additional information. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Dar and Dr. Mullenar. We're gonna move to president Martinez for a question.
Are, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. First, I wanted to echo what trustee Dar said about allowing our educators time to master their craft. That is probably the thing I hear the most on campuses from our educators. You gave some great examples about what some campuses are doing, but our teachers constantly voice that they need more time planned to work on these instructional lessons. So just wanted to echo what trustee Dar said. Regarding our professional development, how do, how do we currently measure our educator professional development to ensure it's effective and that our teachers are truly getting what they really need? Is there a type, is there a evaluation or measurement around professional development?
So it's a couple of things, right? One, there's a lot of PD. There's a lot of different PD offerings and such, right? But in order to really measure effectiveness, right? You gotta be able to ultimately tie it to some kind of learning, right? That is like a before and after, right? And so one of the things that we started doing, and the district has done this work, I'm not sure if the board has gotten this before my time, is that we, we're looking at something called ARY, right? Academic Return on Investment. Making sure what we're investing in, right? Has a return on investment that we actually have measures to look at, whether it is actually working, right? We spend millions here, we spend thousands here, right? Is there a return on investment on that? But in order to truly do that, you gotta have measures, right? You gotta have measures for growth. You gotta have a, a way to capture baseline and you gotta see if it worked, right? And I'm just gonna say this word, assessment, right? You gotta have some level of universal assessment to be able to know whether things are working or not, right? And, and then at the campus level, right? One of the questions, we recently had a principals meeting and we asked actually principals this question, is your coaching working? How do you know, right? And the answers, some were very confident they know, some sometimes, some I'm not sure, right? So wanna get to always knowing that their coaching is working, right? An amazing principal can tell you, right? Like this is where the, my, my, my staff was struggling or the teacher I was coaching. Here's what I did, here are the research. This is a question we often ask when we interview principals is, tell us about a successful coaching experience. What did you do? What did you provide? How did you know it worked? I also like to ask the reverse. Tell us about a coaching experience that didn't work. And if you could go back, what would you do differently, right? And so we, we, we gotta make sure we tie it and have a through line into what works. We're also just doing that centrally as well, right? Our staff goes to PD centrally. Why are we going to it? What's the return on investment, right? Those dollars could be rerouted to tutoring, to small group, if that's the case, right? So those are things that we're looking at, but you gotta get a whole lot tighter on how you measure that. So that's what I would-
Do we, do we also capture our feedback from our teachers themselves on the PD?
Trustee Martinez, I'm president Martinez. We're having a hard time hearing you. AV guys, could you amp her up a bit?
Um, the second question I asked was, are we also collecting feedback from our teachers on the professional development they receive?
Yes, yes. Always, we always do when it comes to our planning days, when it comes to our whole district days, we do collect feedback. We have survey data where they share what worked, what didn't. Some are, right, a yes, no, some are more qualitative. And then there's always open box questions where they can provide feedback and such. We do that. We did that with both of our planning days we recently had. We're about to have a, a whole day of professional learning in the first week of November. They will get an exit survey on that and what that looks like and what it's saying and what it's trending.
And do we currently have a former, a formal new teacher mentor mentee program?
Can you come again on that one, president Martinez?
Do we have a new teacher mentor mentee program?
Not a district-wide one at this time. I don't know if the past, if the district had one, but in terms of district-wide mentor-
Or mentee program for new teachers, we don't have one. Now, campuses, right, do make decisions where they pair teachers with a veteran teacher, with a new teacher. But in terms of a district-wide where we have a cadre of mentors who have free release time, like mentoring done well, right? You gotta have free release time, right? And, and then when you think about new teachers, right? When, if, if you really, really design it well, they're, even the way you give them their cap, class sections and their course load, right? You give them time to be able to be mentored. Fortunately, the state has created a pathway to be able to go after, there's an echo. Should I keep going? Okay, that, there's, where you can access annual grant-making to be able to design a mentor program. This cycle has passed and so that's something we've identified to be able to unveil in our system, to be able to have it. One, you gotta have a defined way to identify mentor teachers and master teachers. And then you gotta design schedules that allow them to interact. So we've talked about having that and that's something we should. It's just making sure we have reliable funding sources to keep it. Cause you don't wanna start something like that and not keep it going.
Trustee Martinez, or president Martinez, we had a new teacher induction department a few years ago that is no longer in place. That worked with all of our new teachers as well as any new teacher that came into the district to support them. It was tiered support where if you had teaching experience before, but new to the district, that support looked different with our new teacher induction specialists rather than a brand-new teacher. So that is something that our team has been discussing, the need to bring that back and to really go after the funding through our grant cycles in our budget priority setting.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you, president Martinez. Trustee Luipenos.
I think Kevin was before me.
You go ahead.
I'd like to, thank you for this presentation. I would like to second what trustee Ann Dar mentioned about time for the teachers. You know, I'm only for, when do we give them enough time to do what they need to do to be more effective teachers in the classroom? And then what training are we providing? And when do we do that growth for teachers to be a rock star?
Can you say it one more time, cause you cut off a little bit.
What kind of training are we providing to have those teachers to be rock stars? I mean, trustee Wallace mentioned about the rock star teachers. So when do we have that training? And, and what kind of training are we doing to have those teachers?
Well, growth doesn't happen over time, right? It's a, it's, it's, right, it's a growth trajectory. We want people to get better. So we have multiple layers of support, right? We have T-test, right? Where they set a goal annually, right? And they go with their principal or AP or who's assigned to them. And they measure whether they grew on that goal or not, right? And then they provide artifacts, right? Then there's another layer, right? We provide year-long professional learning in different areas to be able to develop in specific areas. But for me, the, the heart of it is gonna be coaching at the end of the day. How we coach? How we coach in the moment? How we push in? How we are able to provide models? How we are able to provide opportunities for people to go see another colleague do it, right? That's the best form of learning, right? But you gotta design for that. You gotta be, be able to have the resources and the people to be able to do that. Even how we deploy our coaches. We've, we're having this conversation right now, right? Are we deploying our coaches in the right way and the right supports, right? We have a, a coaching concept right now where we have roles where we ask them to be experts of everything, right? That's like even principal teams, when you see them assigned, right? Like principals like of a high school, they may take the reading team and the math team or, or the science team, but their AP will take, right, the other content areas. So even how we build our coaches, right now we have a generalist coach concept where we are asking a single coach to know be in jack-of-all-trades, right? So that alone is, I would argue, it's, it's, it's a, is a design flaw that we need to make better over time and have like literacy coaches, math coaches, et cetera. So those are some things we're working on as well. But it's multiple layers. But one of the key things is being able to coach in the moment, in real time, right, when they need it, when that support isn't it? And being able to have models to be able to show them and see. There's no better coach than being able to see, right, someone else do it who's walking in your shoes.
You mentioned the teachers at Southwest High School in math. How often can we capitalize on those teachers or in, in that specific department to grow other teachers across the district?
We can in many ways, right? They're not the only ones, right? But we have to go looking, right? That's the first thing I did. I told the research team, show me where people grew, not just at the school-wide level. During that workshop, the last slide I gave you, I made it anonymous, but I showed you teachers who grew at least fifty percent of their students, right? At least one level, right? So there's a lot of that. Even at an F-campus, you can have a, a team, right, that grew, but the rest of the school didn't grow, right? And then we as a system have to find ways to leverage their learning, right? When we have professional learning days. In the last principals meeting, we had principals presenting to each other, right? Rather than just having someone else come, right? And, and it was one of the more highest-rated principal meeting experiences when I read the feedback from their colleagues, right? Literally like someone who's walking in my shoes, right? And, and, and here's how they're doing it. And with demographics, that include my challenges as well. So it's how we do that. We should also have a formal teacher leader program. We should, right? We should have teacher leaders. We're piloting something called opportunity culture right now, where we take teacher leaders, right? And, and, and be able to extend their reach with others at, at their school to be able to keep them in the classroom, but also make sure that they're incentivized, there's a stipend involved, to be able to also coach their colleagues as well, right? That takes work, right? So we are definitely exploring strategic staffing models to be able to do that. But would love to, over time, we've had this discussion recently, have like a teacher leader concept. You shouldn't have to step out of the classroom in order to be able to, one, also make more, but also to be able to coach up your colleagues and such. So would love to figure out how to do that at a scale going into next year.
So now that we have the data, hopefully next year we have, we see the data growing on, on those packets of teachers that are not, all those classes that are not growing, we can see more growth next year. Oh, this year. Okay. Thank you.
Trustee Lynch?
Just, I guess, one comment, then one final question. I think it'd be helpful for us to understand, I realize you're new and what is realistic to expect this year versus, you know, future years? I know some things take a lot of scheduling and planning, but I think it'd be helpful for the board and the community to kinda understand that. And then my last question is, as we look at curriculum-based professional learning, you mentioned the, kinda the three tiers, if you will. Is that language you use, is that common among teachers? Or is that more from an administrative level?
That's more like the research basis for it. And there's a citation in the bottom in terms of how people think about it globally, how TEA thinks about it, right? How systems think about it as you're rolling out curriculum. It's not an, we're not going and, so now, our, our content teams and our school leadership teams have, right, rubrics where they go look at curriculum implementation fidelity. So you can see to the degree which is the curriculum, is amplified being used and how much of it is being used. So we have those, right? But globally, right? When you kinda think about a system and where it's at in its journey in basically adopting new curriculum and then ultimately getting great at it and then innovating off of it, that's, there's three buckets of how people often think about it.
Okay. And then last thing, in, in any organization, I think it's always helpful to know kinda where you stand, feedback. How do we do that with teachers, you know, in relation to these type of things? So they know, you know, where they're, where they're excelling and where their growth opportunities are?
So that, that's the campus-based leadership team, right? You have the principal, you have the AP, you have the coach, right? Our high schools, right? We have a high school principal, we have four APs, they have a dean. Some have two additional coaches based on our school performance framework, right? There're seven, eight adults, some two, some schools that are smaller, right? It's two adults, three adults, right? That's the team coupled with district-based supports and being able to provide that real-time support and coaching, both within their professional learning communities as well as during the classroom. For me, the, the, the heart of where we really need to be at is professional learning communities, right? That's where the design of a lesson, right? That's where you anticipate misunderstandings. That's where you really think about all those components of tier one, right? Before you deploy it and run the play in the classroom. So we really need to be in those spaces to be able to help people support and grow and how to deliver, right, quality lessons over time. So that's really where we need to be versus, right? Always just coming to classrooms, staying there for fifteen minutes and leaving, right? That's not gonna give you enough of a snapshot, right? So professional learning communities to me is really the heart of work, the heart of the work and where we need to spend our time.
Trustee Luipenos?
Thank you. Kind of on the feedback, and you mentioned the feedback that we get from teachers after professional development. Is that feedback consistent among teachers on what's working, what's not working?
Well, we run it after every professional learning day we have, right? And so we have a consistent survey and what we ask. And so we aggregate. We don't force people to fill it out, right? So you might have five thousand people participated, twenty-five hundred filled it out, right? And then so you use that, right? That is one snapshot that you have, that you're systematically collecting. But then we also, we, I made sure that my team from school leadership, both on learning and leading side, they were deployed at specific schools to be able to also get qualitative data as well too, right? The things that don't always make it on the survey. But we are consistently running, right, the, the questions we ask globally and are able to assess whether or not people felt it was productive, what they got, what they did in it. And then of course, there's always an open box question and we can read the things that they say there as well too.
And for the style that it was not productive to the teachers, do we replace us items on the next, on the next training? Or do we continue to do the same thing?
No, we adapt from there. When we did the first planning day survey, a lot of people did not wanna go to different places, right? So they wanted to be at campuses, they wanted to be at their school. So that was a major shift, right? I read that, I was like, yeah, we need to be, we need to make sure people are on the ground or at their campuses, right? And then we now just captured another survey now that they're at campuses, what they wanna do, right? Now, the feedback varies, right? Some of the feedback is, I just wanna be in my classroom. I wanna be in my classroom, not in a PLC. We have to assess that as leadership. Is that something we just allow universally, right? And if you're struggling and I'm struggling and she is, we're both teaching third grade, reading at the same school and she has answers that we need to learn from, we need to make sure we create more time for us to learn from her, right? But, but I could easily make a decision to play it into everyone just being in your own classrooms, right? Now, for some people, it's great that we give more time with their colleagues. For some folks, they just wanna be in their classroom and plan alone. But that's attention, right? That you are not always gonna be popular for, for making a decision, right? So those are things we wrestle with.
Well, I'm glad to hear that we're listening to the feedback from our teachers.
So I just wanna add a layer to that. Because giving us feedback and then reacting to feedback and then following that loop again is what I feel we're missing. I love that we're gaining the feedback and we're reviewing it. But sometimes you gotta pull those groups in, cause you have trends that you're seeing through that feedback, even through the first two sessions. And then pulling some of those teachers in and helping us design the-
And then pulling some of those teachers in and helping us design the next planning day. Like, we need them at the table helping to design and getting that feedback. That's important. And that's important for our principals too. It's some of our principals, especially our veterans are going out and asking them, here's our principal meeting agenda, what do you think about this session and getting some feedback. And we've got to broaden that and do it with our teachers. We need to listen to them so they'll be engaged. It's like, you know, Mr. Choudry said, not everyone's going to be happy for having to, to a planning day and having a structure. But if we have people at the table and helping us design that and then helping us design the feedback as well of what questions to ask, we're going to get stronger. But that's our continuous improvement cycle. We've started it. Now we got to go to that next, that next loop and work on that part of it.
Thank you. I just have a quick question. Appreciate the high energy and the quick responses. So what I heard was, you go into schools, you go into rooms, you observe, and you're going to find the answers to unlock for the rest of the system. So to me, I think what I heard, I just want to clarify, identify, share. The share gets to the heart of where you think we need to go, which is professional learning. Are we good for so far? Am I, did I track?
Finish your thought and then I can fill in.
Okay, okay. And then you will apply and that might be a pilot or that might be system-wide. Then you're going to assess our students' growth and our professional leaders' growth as well. And then somehow you're going to deliver this to our community and to this board. Because if it works, it's a win. And if it doesn't, we have to report it and determine how to pivot.
Absolutely. And so the only thing I would add is professional learning that leverages each other, right? Systematically to be able to grow. That is important. And ensuring that we staff our schools with high needs in more equitable ways with ensuring that they have the resources they need and the supports and not universally treating every formula in the same way. Which is, right now, it's like you hit a threshold, right? 700 students, 500 students, you get or you don't get. And then, but then students come in at the middle of the year, right? Students come in later, right? Being able to have, look beyond just black and white formulas, right? But also having student need dictate allocations as well. Right now, we do some of that with the SBF, the School Performance Framework. We give schools an extra coach. We've done that. We've, during leveling, we always have to level. That's always going to be a challenge, right? We skip, right? We say like if we removed, right, a teacher or we increased sizes there or collapsed, right? It could impact the school, right? The school is now in a multi-year F school. Yeah, the class sizes are smaller. But if you leveled that classroom at this critical point in time, you can throw off the trajectory that they have had. So I would say it's everything you said, also ensuring that we are resourcing our schools in better and smarter ways as well.
So what I'm hearing you say is 100 students on Campus A could be 200 students in 100 bodies on Campus B because the needs are higher.
Yep. Or 100 campus is on Campus A and Campus B. That generates one teacher, right? Just a simple formula, just making it up here. But Campus A's 100 students is very different than the 100 students as well, right? I was at Western Hills Elementary. They have to door knock to make sure that ADA at that campus is 90-plus percentage point to make sure, one, we have the funding in our system, but so kids just show up to school, right? And I know you guys know this, but it just was a very unique campus. And the formula is very different and needs to be very different, similar to the other campus we spoke about.
Okay. Thank you and thank you for a great presentation. Dr. Mullenar, any comments? Okay. Thank you all trustees for your questions. And at this time, we will call the public meeting to order for the district's 2023 Financial Accountability Rating School First Public Hearing. Dr. Mullenar, I would love to turn it over to you. And Trustee Martinez is back with us.
All right. Thank you, Trustee Jackson. We have our CFO who's going to do our public hearing. So I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to her.
Yes, just one second, please. The clicker, I needed to get the clicker. Good evening, Carmen Arieta Candelaria. Good evening, President Martinez, members of the board, Dr. Mullenar. I'm here to present the 2024 School First Report. This is part of the public hearing that's required by the state. The purpose of the School First Report is our financial accountability rating system that again holds school districts accountable for the quality of their financial management practices. And it's a tool across the state that creates transparency and discloses the quality of those decision-making processes concerning the financial resources of the district receives. How are the ratings assessed? Well, TA has developed 21 indicators that produce a numerical score from 0 to 100. And they give a rating of A, B, C, or F based on those scores that are calculated. There are three major areas assessed. There are critical indicators. These are four indicators that you get either a pass or fail score. And obviously, we passed all four scores. There's solvency indicators and there's 11 of those indicators. And you can generate an additional 85 points. Fort Worth ISD generated 85 out of 85 points. There are two markers that TA did not score this year, indicator 10 and 15, primarily due to the COVID. And coming out of COVID, they elected not to measure those indicators. And then we have six indicators related to financial competence, total 15 points. And those 15 points were garnered by Fort Worth ISD. There are some changes effective. Every year, we're required to go over those changes. And these are the three indicators that changed year over year and they're listed there. We are required to hold a public meeting within two months of the release of the final first rating. So our first rating was effective on September 10th. And this notice was also published in our newspaper. And it was published in accordance with TA regulations on October 11th. And therefore, we're holding this public hearing on October 22nd. There are certain requirements that the Fort Worth ISD must comply with and we have to distribute an annual financial management report that compares current year ratings versus prior year ratings. And those are disclosures that are required by state law as a notate.